Okay, cheers.
Right.
Well, if you are aware.
We are recording. We are recording.
All right. I'd like to call the meeting.
You can be gavel. You can be gavel.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has advanced one nation under God, in good judgment, by the letter of this and this ground.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do have one amendment, and it is for the bus lease approval.
Did all board members get a chance to see?
Yes.
Yes.
So, at this point, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. If there's anybody who would like to share any questions or concerns with the board, just come to the podium. Get you on the.
I'm Amy Maxwell. I am a teacher here, a parent here, and a lot of other. I would just like to take this time to say thank you to the Board of Education members for your service. This is National Board of Education Appreciation Week. And the hours that you put in to focusing on the future of our school and our community and our students is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You feel much love here today. It's one year. Yeah. So can. Are there any other? We will have an additional comment period at the end of the meeting if there's anybody who would like to ask anything then. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent for our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So, the bulk of my report tonight will consist of a report from athletics and from our athletic director as well as just some updates on our New York State assessment results and our district goals for the year based on our strategic plan and our blueprint for excellence. But I did just want to also echo Mrs. Maxwell's comments of appreciation for the board. So, it is Board Appreciation Week. Usually, I would read a proclamation. Unfortunately, the proclamation was not available. I'm not sure why. There has been a lot going on recently in the state, so the governor may hopefully will be putting that out later in the week. So, we do understand that. But I did want to just, you know, reiterate my appreciation for the board and on behalf of the administrators and everyone in the district. And we, we know that you don't get paid enough to do this job. You know, it is volunteer work in essence, and the time and commitment that it takes us to be a board member is, it's quite substantial, but it's also meaningful work, and we appreciate you all. So, thank you. I did just want to briefly comment and just update the board on, so an email that I sent out today, I'm not sure if everybody received it, but there were some swatting attempts today in some of the schools in the region. So, previously, we were one of the schools that were targets of the swatting attempt. So, for people who don't know, the idea of swatting is that it is actions that are taken by, I guess we would say, bad actors who are trying to divert police resources. So, that's where the term SWAT comes in. Think of SWAT team. So, to divert police resources. So, if there's a false bomb threat or someone, you know, tries to report a shooting or something, and all of the law enforcement, you know, could be for a number of reasons, are targeting them, their focus on other schools. So, it could be a diversion attempt, but it also is an attempt, I think, to create disruption in the schools to get attention for whatever reason that could be. So, some schools in the capital region today, some staff members received emails with a bomb threat and a ransom to be delivered, I believe $10,000. And, you know, I think we've had a couple. I think this is about the third substantial one in the capital region since when we were one of the, we had one of the first ones. So, law enforcement's a little, as much has a protocol for this now. And so, the sheriff's office reached right out to state police and some of the federal agencies counterterrorism task force, and they were on it. They traced these. They can, you know, there's electronic signatures, and they had deemed it unsubstantiated and not arrest of schools. So, I think what I did want to let the board know is that the first time we did receive one early in the morning, it was the first one we had, and we did, at that point, shut down. And we ended up shutting down for the day. Some schools opened after a delay. I'm not sure, you know, I think it depends on the situation, but there is a much quicker response to it, and it may be that we don't need to shut down or delay. And I think it'll depend really on what we're advised to do with law enforcement and whether or not they think they need to check. But this was very similar to one that they had received at, to some of the synagogues recently. So, they felt pretty confident that it was, it was just an attempt to see if people could get money and/or maybe just to create a disruption. So, I did want to share that with you. I'm not sure if you have any questions. Obviously, first and foremost, when, if we were to receive something here, you know, our job administratively, the principals and myself, is to, number one, make sure there is no immediate threat, contact and contact law enforcement and work with law enforcement. So, we would not necessarily be putting a note right out to the board and depending, we may not even be able to put one out generally to the public. We would do that as soon as we can, but trying to really just make sure that we are getting the necessary people involved very quickly. And then, we would start communicating out, obviously, from the inside out, right? Our faculty and staff, our students if necessary, and then work on communicating outside of the building. And it's not to say that it's a disregard for the board or our families or parents, but it's just that we really need to make sure that we're immediately safeguarding everybody in the building in our care first and foremost. So, as soon as we can, we'll be getting those notifications out. All right? So, if there are no questions about that, then I'm going to invite Mr. Moore up to the podium. He has shared with you, so you have a paper copy of some information that he'll be going through. As you know, you know, periodically, we will give athletics updates. So, this is about the time of the year that Mr. Moore and I think it's good idea is to give you an update kind of on our fall numbers, our fall season, how things are going, looking forward to our winter and spring seasons. And I did also ask him to provide some data, and I'll talk about it a little bit more afterwards. I know I mentioned in my board report about starting to maybe do some research and really look at our numbers, our mergers, and just kind of really try to start forecasting a little more where we think we'll be this year, next year, instead of really going season to season and constantly being reactionary, I think, to our situation sometimes in some of our non-merged sports. So, Mr. Moore will start, and then we'll have a discussion.
All right. So, as Julie said, you know, it's the end of the fall, pretty much the end of the fall season. We're starting to get into that playoff time, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on, on the fall season and a few things going forward. You know, this fall, we had, we have, we offer five sports, and we are merged completely with Cambridge in four of them. The only sports, so it's boy soccer, golf, field hockey, and football. We are merged at every single level for those sports. In girls soccer, this year, Section 2 just passed a new, a new edict that, at the sub-VARSI level, which would be JV or modified if we did not have enough numbers, within the first 10 days of practices, that you could merge with another school if you needed to at, at a modified or JV level. So, that's what happened this year. Cambridge came to us and said they only had, like, six kids for the girls soccer, modified soccer. So, we were able to just basically say, we can do it. We merge. We don't need Section 2 approval. We just need to have the Sonic League approval, which we got. It doesn't need to be passed by the board. So, this year, we mod, we merged in my, in modified girls soccer. So, that was a first for us. Also, to that, today, field hockey is playing their sectional game. As we speak in Johnstown, the boy soccer team is, is playing tomorrow in Borreysville at 3:00, and the girls varsity team is playing in Germantown tomorrow at 3:00. So, those, those games will all be up there. And then, this week, this weekend, Salem, our Cambridge-Salem, is playing their football game at Greenwich.
It's at Cambridge.
It's at Cambridge versus Greenwich. But if they win, they're in the playoffs, and if they're not, they'll just play some crossover games to finish the season. So, some of the merger data, you know, this year, we had, at Salem, we had 70, we had 91 kids go out for sports in just Salem. Like I said, since we are merged in all sports except for girls soccer, we had 16 girls at the VARSIA level this year. So, that's a Salem participation rate of about 38%. Within the merge, Cambridge, they have 55% of the numbers, and we have 45% of the numbers. So, you know, there's, we don't want to call it even, but there, I mean, we're fairly close as far as what we, we have. You know, as we move forward, looking at participation, you know, I have, there is a graph past the one that you're on right now. Looking at participation for the last three years for girls, for girls soccer, boy soccer, football, and field hockey, as you can see by the graph, girls soccer is pretty, pretty much the same, but still not enough to ever, we haven't had a JV team in quite some time. Boy soccer, we merged this year for modified for the first time to try to keep the continuity of the program. The coaches wanted to, you know, just have a whole, whole program that they could start from 7th grade on, and hopefully that'll improve the continuity and also improve just the overall competition that we can offer. Football, we, this is, this year is the lowest that we've had. I'm sorry, it's not the lowest. I went backwards. We had 22 kids at Salem go out for football, all three levels. And then, for field hockey, in 2021, we had 22 participants. Last year, we had 13. This year, we had 12. So, the numbers are going down for field hockey, which is a little concerning. And then, within the last week, I put a participation survey out to the 6th grade, and out of 39 kids, one kid said that they would be playing field hockey next year. And ultimately, that could change, but that, that's a concerning number if we're looking to continue that program.
How many play on the field?
It is 11. It is 11. And honestly, we've had a couple games this year where we've only had nine. And I think we've been as low as eight, just injuries and for whatever reason. So, that is concerning as we look for, you know, as we're talking about being reactive, you know, proactive, we're looking at, you know, where, where we should go moving forward if certain sports are viable. Any questions about numbers?
Just your interest survey that you put out to the 6th graders. Did you just survey the, the sports that we offer, or did you say if you had the opportunity to play sports, what might be your?
I only put out the sports that we offered with one caveat, which I'll mention in a second. So, those are the numbers. And then, finally, just very quickly, as we move forward, this winter will be our first season that we're merged in girls wrestling. So, it'll be a Salem-Cambridge girls wrestling team. On December 27th and 28th, we are holding a holiday basketball tournament. So, that's for girls and boys JV varsity, and that's, so we'll have eight games on each day. So, it's basically going nine to nine. So, and I think the superintendent would love to be there for all of it.
Merry Christmas.
I'll know all of theirs.
I will. I might be on making.
So, and finally, I mentioned the caveat, modified boys lacrosse. We've had some people come saying they had some interest in playing lacrosse, starting just at the modified level, and we have started to reach out to Cambridge and Greenwich to gauge interest in a three-way merge for modified lacrosse. Mergers for the spring have to be in by January 1st and have to be approved by the Adraonic League, and then go to Section 2 by January 1st. If we're looking at merging for a spring, any spring sport, but this one obviously has a few more moving parts. So, I will leave it at that. So, if there are no other questions, I know you wanted to mention something.
So, two things. First of all, I apologize because we have a new person at the table, and so I, I was remiss. And so, our student board member for this year is David Gillis, and he is a senior and is a resident of Hebron. He wrestles on the VARSIA wrestling team, and he aspires to be a history teacher. And in his spare time, he has been a member of the drama club, mock trial. This year, he's participating in FFA and the math team, and I think he'll be a great addition to the board this year. And we appreciate his coming on short notice. He was just interviewed on Monday, and he made himself available this evening.
He thinks it's gonna be like this, sir.
And, and I will say that when Mr. Greeney and I were speaking with him, he mentioned, so our first year that we had a student board member was Cole Loveland. He was also a wrestler, and I thought it was, it was really nice to hear that David talked about, you know, Cole, like, seeing Cole participate and how that was something that he really thought that he wanted to do and aspired to, and here he is sitting here. So, pretty exciting. So, welcome. And I wanted to introduce you because you may, at some point, if you feel like contributing, you know, if you have something to discuss, I wanted everyone to know who he was and why he was speaking at the table about athletics or anything else that's a topic this evening. So, so, thank you, and I'll enjoy having you on the board this year.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Cole's typical of a lot of kids here. Small districts, kids are. I'll get it right before too long. And we have a lot of kids that are involved in a lot of activities.
Correct.
I know last year, there was an incident where one of our girls basketball players was unable to play in a game because she was also in drama club, and they were doing a rehearsal. Has, have, have you or have the coaches sat down with the other coordinators of activities to try and balance those schedules out so we don't end up, so we minimize those situations?
So, in September, every year we do this, the, all the coordinators get together, and they discuss their calendar. I, and I, this year, I sat in a meeting, and basically, it's been, of course, especially, he's like, oh, I have a concert, I want to do a concert this night. Will that work? And we, we make the necessary changes or, you know, adapt to whatever, whatever works for everybody. You know, as far as the play goes, I have basically, I've moved all our games away from the play, so there won't even be an issue with anybody that's participating missing a sporting event.
And, you know, that's been a little, that's been a work in progress over the years, and it's not a perfect scenario because of the play practices.
Oh, I understand.
You know, our practices, and I think, well, and the coaches, I think everybody, it's hard because everybody sacrifices a little, and sometimes it comes at a little bit inconvenient times, and it depends each year on the schedule. And I know, I think we can appreciate that. Mr. Eastman has a, has a small window of after-school starts and, and doing his, his auditions and, and kind of working everything in, and there's really the sweet spot of where to have the performances before people are losing interest of, you know, no matter what, you could be competing with sectionals, you could be competing with a number of practices for the new season coming up. So, there's this really tight window, and I think, you know, I know, I appreciate, we, since I've been here, this has been a conversation, and I think we've made a lot of progress. And I think I, I, we owe it to Mr. Eastman and everyone involved in the drama, Mr. Moore and our coaches. But Mr. Moore, I think, has worked, worked really hard, and I think coming, doing this in the beginning of the year is very helpful.
I, I, I believe, I know, with a small district like this, that kids being involved in a lot of things, it's never going to be perfect.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure that we're taking.
Yeah. We had a conversation, I believe, he actually moved it a week earlier than it usually is. So, that would also be very helpful.
Thank you.
Despite the merger, do you think these numbers are still pretty low? Would you like to see more participation?
You know, I, if I look at Salem participation, I say it's 38%. I was the AD probably now 10 years ago for a couple, and right around there was probably 31% to 32%. So, it's, it's gone up. Would I like to see it go higher? Yes, obviously, because we are not like last year. We didn't feel a JV ba, a boys basketball team because of the numbers. You know, two years ago, or now, three years ago, we didn't have a boy soccer team because we didn't have the numbers. So, yes, I would like to see the numbers go up.
So, a few things related to athletics. I'd like to have a conversation about the modified lacrosse and, but I also wanted to present the idea, and I know I mentioned this in my board report. I think it's time to really take a harder look at our participation, our numbers, really talk to our youth, our rec leagues, what do those numbers look like for our younger students, younger kids, so that we can get an idea of what kids are participating in, what they're interested in, and also looking ahead. So, I was approached by the Cambridge superintendent to discuss the idea of a three, you know, considering a three-school merge in the near future with Greenwich as well. And I think right now, Greenwich is, you know, they're in a very good situation. I don't think they've really had a lot of merger talks. They're not overly interested. They're willing to have some conversations in the future because I think they know that they could, that they may end up being in that, and they want to have good partners as well. I think also, right now, there's an interim in Cambridge, and that does, I think, to make future decisions within, you know, hopefully, they'll have a permanent superintendent, but you want that superintendent to also have that same vision or philosophy. So, in the meantime, as kind of some of that work is being done in those districts, my thought is, is that we should really start to look at our numbers, our participation, my proposal. So, after we discuss my proposal, we need to have a, a talk about the modified lacrosse and where, what the board thinks of kind of joining into that, that merge and adding that sport in. And so, I think, as opposed to kind of always having these be really spur-of-the-moment decisions, we could start to, you know, if we could have an ad hoc committee, subcommittee of the board, two board members, myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Greeney, and David, when he's available in his schedule, I think that could really help us do a lot of that legwork and be able to come back, you know, at some point, maybe by the end of the school year, with really looking ahead, so that when it is the right time to have conversations, I am going to be having a meeting tomorrow with the Cambridge superintendent. He has some questions because he's the interim about how some things are working. Fall is always our most challenging time because we have so many sports that are merged and trying to, there's a shortage of bus drivers in both districts, trying to get to games, who, you know, it's not always equal sharing, but I think Joe Wilbur, our transportation manager and Cambridge's, they work really well together. It's not always perfect, the timing. We have a lot of kids on one bus sometimes. We can't have two buses. Coach LeBlanc is here tonight, and he's offered to drive a bus if he needed to with some kids on it. And so, you know, we try to be creative about it. And so, I am going to be having some conversations with the Cambridge superintendent. He wants to talk about, you know, allocation of resources and those types of things. And, and so, I think those are conversations that will need to be had down the road as we start to merge more and more, and most likely, I would assume, that would be with Cambridge. But as you start to merge, you really need to look at some of that bigger picture, resources, transportation, fields, where are you playing your games? You know, we're, we're kind of swinging it, you know? And so, I think it's important to know the board's position on these things so we can have a sense of direction for the future. So, I'm not sure what your thoughts are about the ad hoc, I know.
I like the idea of the ad hoc, because I do think that we need to have an articulated plan for how we're going to either start to look for the mergers or work our way through the mergers and what our expectations are in the merge. So, I think if we could have that conversation, aside from an emergency situation where we're trying to get everything together, I think that would help us overall with our plan.
Get ahead of it. Position Salem appropriately.
Yes, and I, I think that's really, timing is everything. And, you know, if we, there are two things. When do we decide to merge? You know, what is, is it just when we don't, we can't form a team or when we're getting close? How much do we value JV? And that experience for kids, you know, that can kind of change the timing of it, and as we know the time is nearing, then we can start having those conversations. So, if we go to Cambridge and they say, oh, we're not interested in that merge, we have to look at what our other options are. And so, I think that this would be very helpful.
Now, when we have these merged sports, every year, you have to make the application to the league and the section for these.
Correct. Has to be approved every single year.
So, this would also put us on a schedule to make sure that we're asking those questions and, and making sure that we're looking at, at what we're offering and can offer.
I think when we get to the point where numbers are tight, that it's too late. I think we need to start looking ahead and forecasting what it's going to look like so that we're not in these pinches, and then you can't have a season because we didn't get it approved. And so, I think we really do need to spend some time focusing on it. I would be happy to, to serve on that committee.
I would be, well. Just one other thing. You mentioned soccer didn't need only but legal approval to merge. Does that only soccer, or is it all other?
It's a modified or JV. That's a new Section 2 just passed in the spring. Any mod, anything sub-VARSI, if you, you have a numbers issue within 10 days of VARSIA practices starting in a season, you can get, like, an emergency merger approved.
Okay, so, we don't have a lacrosse, and, and we want it, it would only work if we had one and we're low on numbers. We couldn't start a merge without going through the.
We don't have any numbers. So, for a modified lacrosse team, since it's, since it's new to us, we don't offer it, and we, we have time.
Right. But we do need to go through that process.
The board would have to approve that.
Yeah, in this case, that would be, yeah.
Okay. Because it's also expenditure. It could be possibly expenditure of funds, even if we merge into with another school, right? You know, we will have some expense involved.
Expense involved.
And so, why the board approving that sport and that level of team?
Now, you know, let's talk about that. So, I know there have been conversations in the past about lacrosse and baseball, and, you know, we've had, we had a similar conversation about girls wrestling and, you know, girls basketball numbers. And, you know, merging at the modified level, it's my understanding in, in speaking with some parents that, you know, some of the younger students who are now at the modified level, especially during COVID, we're looking for opportunities. And, and so, over the past few years, there has been somewhat of a youth rec league that has been formed between our communities of Salem, Greenwich, and Cambridge. And so, they've been playing together in a rec league over the past few years. And I'm not sure, but it, it seems like that would be very limited opportunities as they get older here because then it kind of goes into the, into. then it kind of goes into the, into the school and the team role. And I, I mean, I think that one can argue that this could hurt our baseball numbers, but it's not a guarantee that these kids would have played baseball. Now, kids who choose baseball, you know, as, you know, the idea would be is if we did merge with, um, so Greenwich is a lead school. So if we did merge with, with them, then, you know, we would then look to continue that merge to the JV as our kids are moving up JV and varsity levels. And so over time, there could be students who switch. So a lot of, a lot of athletes who like football, in my experience, I mean, I had a stepson and he switched from baseball. He was a football player and he loved it. And lacrosse is fast and a little rougher and it's kind of got a football feel. And some kids liked that. And so, you know, some kids could change over. Um, and I'm, I'm going to tell you this year, they're forming a girls', uh, lacrosse, Cambridge and Salem, uh, Cambridge and Greenwich. And, you know, then there could be that issue of, you know, should we, you know, look at that? And so, you know, that could hurt softball numbers. On the other hand, we want kids to play. We want them to have opportunities in athletics. So it's, it's a tough one. I mean, we are merged for baseball and I think we just, we look at the numbers, we do more interest. Um, so I'm just wondering the board's thoughts.
I think a lot of us, you know, having committee conversations, looking at numbers, looking at what it looks like. I mean, I'm, I'm for giving kids opportunities, whatever it is that we can offer to them.
And when I asked about the interest survey, for me, I think one of the barriers to getting where you want to be is, well, we've always done it that way. So I, I have no, uh, you know, idea that we have to have, because we've always offered these sports, we can continue to offer these sports. So I just wanted to make sure that we were reflecting what interest was coming. And if we're getting that interest coming up from kids and a, a goodly number of kids who could actually, you know, form together and, uh, want to continue to play, I do think that we need to, to listen to what they're interested in so that, you know, we're not trying to.
Ultimately, that's why we're looking at the modified lacrosse because kids started showing interest in it. And there's enough kids that we think it might be a viable option moving forward.
Are there ways to get, I mean, other than surveys and things, like I know, like you do the signups for each season, like are there ways that you could sign up earlier for each one so that you would, I mean, obviously you have to have those deadlines too, but.
Well, P L I D has to be open. It has to be 30 days because you're putting in medical information and they want, it depends on stuff to date, medical information.
But we've done in the past, we've launched PE classes and, you know, and that's something that I think, again, we haven't done that for a couple of years at the high school level. And that may be something that we would want to do again.
And we, I mean, we could do it the same as what we just did with the sixth graders. I sent them a Google survey and they answered it.
Google survey.
I just sent one to the seventh graders today and then I'll go, I'll just go up. But I want to have so much out there right away.
Right.
So, but that'll be in the next couple of days.
In a merged environment, do you think you get much better coaching? Do you think the pipeline from modified to JV to varsity is that much stronger where the, the entire experience is, you know, more rewarding for the child? Or instead of failing to.
I think there's more room for competition when you're merged because then we can provide the levels that we don't have here.
It's pooling of coaching resources and it's pooling of coaching resources as well because, um, it is hard to get coaches, it's hard to get referees. It, it's, you know, athletics in general. I mean, there's a, there's a demand for it and, you know, and you can see the reasons, but there are a lot of hoops you have to go through and a lot of certification process to become a coach. And some people don't have the time or the money to do that. Um, you know, you see a lot of teachers and, and our PE teachers, um, they, that's part of their teaching certification is they are kind of, they're, they have the certification to coach, so it's much easier. But for people who are not PE teachers or teachers, and there's like a middle ground for people who have other teaching certifications, it is a bit of a process. And so it is the pooling of resources. Um, and I think we're always need to be mindful of money, but I want to really put out there is that I don't see merging as a, per se, a cost-saving measure. And Will and I think we have the same philosophy that, um, you know, we're not doing it to say, hey, we're going to spend less. Um, and, and a lot of, a lot of times there's an opportunity where, so, um, Trevor LeBlanc, Coach LeBlanc is here and, um, we're merged for soccer and he was our soccer coach here. And that, so Cambridge had, they're the lead team, but we said, hey, you know, he, the, the other coach, and I'm, I forgot his name, but he welcomed Trevor in and, and we've got some great resources. And sometimes one's do, one does, um, uh, we have other aspects where one of our coaches might be JV or vice versa. So I think it, it allows you to complete all of them because sometimes we don't have coaches. We're, and we have some young people in the pipeline. I think it's great to talk to, um, our wrestling coaches. And we have a couple of new, younger, uh, coaches coming in for wrestling. We had one for, oops, he's talking to me. We had one, um, couple of our fall seasons. We have a, some of our former athletes and some former Cambridge athletes that are interested in getting into coaching. So, um, I think it's helpful, but I think it's a good pooling of resources in terms of coaching resources. And, um, you know, I think that's sometimes part of it, that it's hard for people to let go of, well, we really want this person to be our coach. Um, and when you're becoming part of it, but we still want that opportunity to play. So.
A little competition.
Yeah. And I think sometimes depending on who you're merging with and joining, that can change what class. So you might not be playing class D and class C, or we might end up being playing in the Loseran and not the.
This is the thing.
Yeah.
Right. But I think those environments, they're more competitive, but that's good for the kids as well. Seems like though we should hire some more, um, coaches that can drive buses. That sounds like a legal angle right there.
Well, all along.
He has a special skill set.
Yes, he does.
That he came in.
Oh, okay.
It was, uh, it was more a second nature to volunteer. So what are your thoughts about? So I will tell you that I talked to, you know, I didn't want to bring something to the table that wasn't necessarily a possibility. So I did do some behind the scenes work and talk to, um, Greenwich and Cambridge. So again, you don't necessarily need the board. Um, so do we need the Cambridge board and the Greenwich board's approval for this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because it's new.
Yes, it's new.
Right. And I'm not sure if Cambridge is merged at the modified level with them, but I know that Greenwich is open to it. And eventually it would be a three-school merge for, um, JV and varsity. So.
So the only problem is currently you were saying that you wanted to wait for the Cambridge part.
Well, no, we're talking about three-school merge for like, for going down.
Okay.
So we're not talking about build everything into what the research. That's really a down the road. Like, that's got, that's a lot of discussion. That would be probably like a committee from, you know, a board member, the superintendent, the A D and the high school principal from every school and just probably study that, get a facilitator.
No, no, that's fine. I would take a proper talking about this.
I missed an episode when I was reading.
Yes. Yeah, no, I think like having like that real big picture conversation. I feel like we have some work to do first.
Oh, definitely.
Before we can have a bigger picture conversation.
Great.
About something like that. But as far as lacrosse goes, I'm in favor of giving kids opportunities.
As far as the, the spring sports, it's, it's just the baseball that's merged at this point.
That is correct. Not softball and track are not merged.
No track.
No track.
So our softball members, we feel are still solid for the few years?
Yes. I think they're good. And I think one of the things I think helps is success.
Yeah.
And obviously our softball team has been very successful the last few years. And I think that has helped the numbers a lot.
Um, and, uh, track, um, we've done a good job. Our numbers have improved a bit, right?
Yeah, a bit.
Yeah, that's something that probably in these discussions, we would, would want to look at, you know? And we have a great coach and he's actually coaching the girls and the boys and, and we're making it work, but we're not competitive as a team. Kids, that's a little different because you can individually compete and have success as well. So it's not been such an urgent, I think, conversation, but I, I still think that's really part of it. And, um, you know, when we looked at basketball, we knew it's going to be tight. And, you know, I don't really want to get into the details, but there are some circumstances that our boys' basketball numbers are going to be closer than we thought they were going to be.
That was my concern.
And, you know, that's the thing is when you say, oh yeah, well, we only really need seven or eight.
Until somebody gets.
Until you don't have seven or eight at the last minute and we miss that opportunity. And I think those are things we really need to start looking at. And then when you only have seven or eight, you don't have a JV, how long can you sustain a program?
I do think if you can't support all three levels, then the level of competition, you know, you're pulling kids from modified right to varsity that maybe aren't ready to be on the varsity team yet and not ready to compete at that level. So I think that's where we come into some issues with wanting to be competitive and wanting to, you know, wanting to have that success.
And ultimately, you're right. That's right. Pulling kids from, from seventh, eighth and sometimes ninth grade all the way up to 11th, 12th grade. I think that has been our biggest trouble.
Yeah.
We've definitely had some kids that would have done much better at the JV level than they did.
Yeah.
At the varsity level. And that has hurt.
How's your weight room?
How is our weight room?
Not as nice as.
We have one. We have a weight room. I know there's been talk of, you know, is there a way we can improve it? Uh, but I think I, it's moved, oh, he's in the garage, he's in the garage across from, so we've moved it to a classroom. So it's a little bigger and we have a weightlifting club. Uh, but it doesn't.
It's a pretty traditional three weights environment. Um, and I think there's, um, I think there's some discussion about really that in the next project, you know, what, what we could do or what that might look like. But again, it's adding space until that's, it's not going to be fully adjustable. So those are the, some of the things where we have to weigh, we'll have to weigh and at least put out there and have some discussions about. Um.
And I do think, I mean, just from what I'm understanding from Cambridge, I mean, that's open to the community too. So their weight room is pretty open. So they're giving some of that back to the community by having the space available for people to go in and exercise in a safe place. And just something to think about for future thought.
Yep. And I, I think it should definitely be, you know, as we move forward on that next project, which will be in, probably in about two years, we'll start having conversations about, you know, what that might look like. All right. Any other questions about athletics right now? All right. So we, obviously it's not a vote for tonight, but the board, it sounds like the consensus is that Mr. Moore could start working with the athletic directors for modified.
So if we're looking at that, odds are very good. I'll have, have to have it in by the next board meeting in November.
Right.
So it's going to be approved, so then I can bring it back around that league.
Okay.
And then, so that would be the timeframe.
Perfect.
So I will get that moved in.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm listening to quickly go over our numbers. I don't think we have enough handouts for everybody, so I'll put it on as you order it. So, uh, just wanted to give you a few updates. We did receive our New York State assessment results. So we do have the data. I will tell you that in years past, we have had New York State comparison data. Usually in the years past, we've done it, um, this presentation for the assessment results in November. The New York State, um, data is not out for comparison yet. So what I would do is share that with the board. Once we get the New York State, I'll share this data with the New York State. You'll see I have it blanked right now and we will add that. Um, and if we have a regional comparison data, I will add that in as well. But I thought of this was timely since we had it. I wanted to share it with you quickly before I share our district goals. And, uh, obviously our district goals are coming out of our, um, priorities that we, um, came up with at our, um, stra-, strategic planning sessions and workshop for the next five years. And so I really wanted you to see the connection be, um, of our goals and really, uh, some of the work that, um, this data will inform us, uh, for the next few years. So first I'll start with our assessment results. So these are ELA, uh, grades three through eight results. And what you'll see here, and I don't know if I can turn on this little light.
No.
Obviously on the way to decision.
I'm just gonna put that back.
Um, so what you'll see here is these are cohorts. So, um, if you look, uh, I don't know if that's purple or pink, but this color right here, so this is the third grade. This is the same group of students that now went to fourth grade. They didn't have any test data because of COVID. Then, so this is, you can see the progression of this same group of kids diagonally there. And, um, so you can kind of just see the different colors. And those are what we call cohort. That's a cohort.
So that purple group would be the freshmen now?
Yes. Yep, they are the freshmen right now. Um, and so, uh, clearly, uh, we have some work to do. Now, I will tell you that when you see the New York State data, we will probably, I think we're a little low. Uh, well, I think we're a lot low. I'm going to basically say that. But I think we'll be much lower in say third, fifth and sixth grade. Probably you'll see in seventh grade, maybe fourth and eighth, where in those 40% will probably be around New York State average. But for me, um, you know, I understand COVID provided gaps and we've, you know, I think you could see before this, we did not have real strong results. So this is a little bit beyond COVID. And we've talked about that, right? I've talked about that when we proposed the new curriculum for, um, ELA, the H M H, the Howin Mifflin curriculum, uh, for ELA. And when we just, um, bought the curriculum for math, you know, we've talked about the need for a vertically aligned curriculum that, um, that works that the kids are experiencing every single year. So the same language, the same vocabulary, the same style, um, of presentation, you know, all of those things are helpful for students. Uh, but these are low. And, um, so I'll talk a little bit about where we'll go in a few minutes with this. Uh, for me, I, if you've heard me present, um, along the way, whether it's this data or other types of data, graduation results, strategic planning, uh, for me, and some people, um, will tell me that I'm crazy. I am not, I don't think we should be satisfied until every student is proficient and we have a hundred percent proficiency. It is possible, uh, Mr. Greenie and I were at a presentation by a renowned educator, Bill Daggett. Um, a few board members went with me recently to hear him speak at another event. And, um, he's done work in New York State. He's, he was an educator. He worked as state ed. He is, um, a national consultant now. And, um, he showed us some data today and how school districts are leveraging AI instead of being afraid of it and how they're transforming, um, their education and, um, you know, all kinds of students. It doesn't matter if you're a special education student, economically advantaged, if you're gifted, all these students are thriving and they're having great results. And, um, you know, I think our faculty is, um, on board. They've been doing the work. They're, um, excited about some of the new opportunities. This is going to take time. Uh, but I want you to know that I'm not satisfied with this. Our principals are not satisfied with this. And I know a lot of our teachers are not satisfied with this. And, um, as I said before, is we need to get the right tools in their hands. And I think we've started to do that. And I appreciate the board's support behind the resources, some of the consultants that, that we've needed to bring in to provide professional development. And we are, um, seeing some change. It's going to take a little more time to see the numbers change, but if each year we can see these going up. Now, the other thing I want to say, and you'll see this with math, this is the first year of next gen standards. You always will see a little dip the first year of new standards are in play because they're new. Um, they sometimes they change the standards, they change, um, how they test. And, um, you know, so this really now will be considered our new baseline. But as I said before, um, you know, I would have liked to see these numbers higher. So if there was a dip, it would be less concerning, but these numbers are even So if there was a dip, it would be less concerning, but these numbers are even before this are on the low side. And as you'll see, you know, ELA, reading levels, the strength of, you know, their, how strong their literacy wise has an impact on our math scores as well. You do see that these are a little higher in terms of our average of the math. And I think that's promising. And I think, you know, we had a meeting today, the principals and I, and we really talked about that we think the key to success is really not that. And I'm a math teacher and math is important. We're still going to focus on math, but really putting a strong emphasis on the literacy piece. You will also see the math come up as well. And just stop me if any of the board members have questions about the numbers.
With significant increase we see possibility across the board. One twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, is that, do you think a result?
Here in math, it, it may be, I don't know, it could be the test. Because I will tell you, I mean, I'll be honest, we did not have next gen curriculum last year. Our teachers, you know, again, not to call them our teachers, but, you know, all the transitions in leadership, we were not able to focus on really making sure they had all the resources, all the training that they needed. And that was one of the reasons why we really focused on making it a priority to get that new math curriculum because the standards were aligned. So it gave them some resources right off the bat that we knew were aligned. So it'll be interesting to see. I'm not sure in terms of the testing and, and how different it was. There also, I believe, was a new test provider and someone else is writing the text now for the next gen then. So, you know, they, they will say, and, you know, I could have put a disclaimer on here that said shouldn't compare. And some people say you should compare this year at all to previously, but I think this data does have meaning and I don't think we should just regard it. And, and, you know, so it's not the same test, but I think the proficiency is important. I'm always going to decide, so go ahead.
Are there any cohorts specifically that are suffering after COVID?
I think really all of our cohorts have been impacted. I think the really, where you're really going to see it, and you don't see it so much on the math, but I think you see it really in these middle grades. So, you know, we're kind of two full years out from COVID. But when you really see, say, a third or a fourth grader, they spent, they came into school and they really never kind of learned truly kind of the, how to do school, the function and routine of school. And so I think it's been slower, but I think everybody to a certain extent, so you think about our eighth graders, our seventh graders, we had kids transition, our current eighth graders and ninth graders, they transitioned in the middle school without ever really finishing or preparing for seventh grade. Our current, you know, and then our students who were in seventh and eighth grade, those two years of COVID, they really, then they went into ninth grade and they not only had to learn how to do ninth grade in high school, which is a big jump from eighth grade, but they never really saw the true middle school experience. So really they've all been impacted, but in different ways, right? But I think the concern now is what you'll see is when we, you know, as we'll put up the region's result, the region's results are very strong and, and, and they're, they're solid. And we saw that US News and World Report says we're number four in the region for our time schools. And, you know, we did pretty well in the nation, but those kids had, they had foundation based on. And, you know, foundation is everything as we move along. And the majority of our three through six students especially, but really all of our three through eight, they have foundationally, it's basically, you know, kind of like a lot of mini earthquakes going on, right? And, and so that we recover, but they have not had the foundation that older kids have had. And the challenge is that we have to learn as teachers, we have to learn how to, how to, it's almost like being a first year teacher every year because every year you're getting a group with a different skill set and they've had different gaps than the students the year before. And those are new skill sets and we have to refresh those. We have to look at our resources, we have to look at our AIS. So those are our challenges and those are some of the things we're working on. So here, this has broken out some groups and, and New York State kind of rates us on some subgroups and it kind of is a comparison. So down the road when we get a report card, we'll have more conversations about those. But I think, you know, there's a lot of talk about diversity, equity and inclusion and diversity, the DEI movement and the work that we should be focusing on and the framework from New York State isn't just, I think a lot of times we hear diversity, equity and inclusion, we just think about race. It's about everybody, it's about all kinds of different subgroups, not just race. So here we have a very small subgroup of race in terms of students of color and Hispanic, so small that we, it isn't measured because it could be identifying. So you don't see that data here and you will see very limited data on the New York State report card. But just a few things to point out here and what we would look at and what I look at is that I look at all students and so ELA proficiency, so I broke it down to three through six, seven and eight just because I want you to see what our building principals kind of, you know, disaggregate that data so that they're focused in their buildings. And I'm sorry if I'm standing in front of anybody. So if you look here and we say all students have 32%, that's the average of everybody altogether. And I looked at my general ed population and I say, there's, they're, whoops, they're higher. They're higher than all students, okay? So they're performing above the average, not a lot, not the number that we want it to be, but they're higher than the average. What's concerning is our students with disabilities, and these are our students in general ed classes. They're significantly not only belows the general ed students, but below the average. And really, if you are really, and kind of, it's never going to be perfect, but you really want to see all of your subgroups be close to the average. And that means that really we're kind of getting that equity thing right. And it's not easy to do. And, and so same with economically disadvantaged. So those are students who live in poverty. So that our population is about 43% and our students who are economically disadvantaged have a, have a much lower, have lower than the average and lower than our non-economically disadvantaged quite, quite a bit. And so those are some groups that we need to be working with. I mean, we need to consider that they, they learn differently and how do we present things to them that is going to work with their style of learning. And then we do have a, have a homeless population and where our students who are classified as homeless are zero proficient. So we really need to take a look at those subgroups. And really as we work and if we really focus on, we're going to focus on everybody, right? But if we also could make some progress in those subgroups, this number is going to really come up.
Is it surprising to you that we're more proficient in math than reading?
No, I guess I would say, I'm a math teacher and so I think math might be to some considered like a less complicated matter, so.
Just seeing what the kids do now and the reading and the writing that goes into math, I was just surprised to see that, I guess. Because if you're not really proficient in reading, math becomes really difficult for some.
It can be, it can be in those word problem sections. And so that's where, so our principals and Mr. Greenie just spend some time looking at the data. So that's where we would look at the data. So, you know, are the areas of opportunity, right, that we can be working on? Was, was the data showing on the sections with more word problems? Was, was that, were those levels and those scores lower?
Lower.
You know, then there were sections where it's just more calculation, analysis, applications, but it's not necessarily word problems. So I think that's where we really have to break apart the data. We haven't been good at that in the past, but it can be time consuming. So that here we did add in a data management tool and we're going to start out with it slow, but it will house all of our data in one place. It'll take our eye ready data, it's going to dump in this data at the high school level. It can take our midterm and our finals and, and, and can look at those skills and standards that were lower. So you can really go and say, okay, number sense was very high, but application was lower. And same in the literacy areas, there are a lot of skills. And, and the other piece of it, you have to remember it's ELA and one of the areas of opportunity we recognize is writing. We're not spending enough time on writing. And it's an important piece of literacy and you don't have as much written word and writing that the students don't have to write an essay for math and those types of things. And so I think that that, my sense is without, I haven't looked at all of that.
No, that makes.
Those data substance, but my sense is is that where we might have some.
Yeah.
Work to do as well. So our principals will be working with this data. So that's that. What are we going to do? So we're, we're looking at, I talked to the principal today and I worked in a different where we had similar challenges several years ago. And I've made some contact with a literacy consultant who would come in and really help. It's a big lift, we have new principals, really a lot of the work's at the elementary and it's a lot for Mrs. Record just to do by herself. How do we, you know, what do we do in the classrooms in that tier one? What do we do in tier two? How do we, what do we need for AIS? How do we collect data? So we have some availability of title grant funds that if the price is right for what I'm hoping to do, then we may contract with a literacy consultant to assist us. And I really like someone who can come in and even embed on some days and work with our teachers and really sit down with them and help them do the work so that they are supported in this new direction. We're going to continue to utilize and be dedicated to our new ELA and math curriculum. Oh, before I, I wanted to go, I'll go back in a second, we didn't talk about science. Curriculum alignment and mapping work is in progress at grades seven and eight this year. We will, so our ARP, we've done a lot of curriculum work, but our ARP funds will be not accessible after September. So we have saved some money for science curriculum and we do need some science curriculum. So we will do a science curriculum search in the spring with our K through eight science teachers. We are transitioning to an instructional co-teach model, the ICT model. This year we're piloting that in grades two, four, six and eight in math in the LA. And then we've added that into science and social studies. So that's where you have a special ed teacher, reg ed teacher in the same classroom. They're working together, they differentiate. And it really helps assist our special education students and who's are in that gen ed classroom and really understanding the material as well as the opportunity for everyone to work together. And all the students in the classroom really end up benefiting from that. It's going very well. Our teachers spend a lot of time in the summer in these grade levels doing professional development. Mrs. Crandall's been working with them. We have a consultant, Dr. Barak, who's been working with them. I think this is really going to assist with those special ed subgroup. And next year we'll take what we've learned from two, four and six and eight, those grade levels. We'll take that and those teachers will help train and prepare the rest of our teachers on the other grade levels to roll that out next year. So we should be in two to three years fully integrated, just kind of depending on the timing of everything. So I want to just quickly go back for a second to science. So last year, Mr. LeBaron certainly, so last year we did not have science four. And so Mr. LeBaron teach to fifth grade, so this year they went from fourth grade assessment to fifth grade. So last year they did not have fourth grade, it was a new curriculum for fourth grade because the fifth grade test kind of tests for the past few years. So that's why we don't have any elementary science data. We do have high school science data, not bad, but you, again, you can see our gen ed students were very strong, but our subgroups not so much. So we've got to really look at new curriculum that will help and that's the differentiation and really will help all of our students be successful. And the new curriculum is much more hands-on, which I think is going to help as well. And we've started to add TA, teaching assistance in as well. And we're going to be looking at our scheduling model. We know it's challenging to teach 30 minutes a day in science at the elementary level. And so, you know, we'll be exploring in the next year how, you know, maybe we can integrate or add some time in because it's pretty challenging for a teacher that, especially on how data they're working at a lab, to get a whole bunch of little people, get them all in the room, get them focused on the lesson, getting set up for lab, doing a lab, having some discussion and then getting cleaned up in 30 minutes. So this is something that we're looking at in our schedule.
They considered blocking this, doing it every other day for now.
That is on the table, yes. Yep. And then obviously we've been doing some work with our multi-tier systems of support and our child study team. And I, I have briefly talked about this, but I have arranged through some of our title grant funds for professional development. Not sure if people are familiar with the work of Ruby Payne, but Ruby Payne has done a lot of work on poverty, understanding poverty. And we will have a consultant, that person is going to come in in April to a superintendent's conference day, be a full day presentation, we'll get the books ahead of time to have them for people who want to read ahead and have some foundation for that work and so that we will be starting some work. And it's a, this is part one, there's a three-part series. So the idea is if it's well received, we'll debrief, we'll look at what do we need X. We may bring in, in future years, compliments of this training. So I hope that will help us with our work with the economically disadvantaged group of students as well. And very quickly, we've had very, as I said, very strong results in our region. So all those things are 100%. I will tell you that over the past four years since I've been here, you know, we kind of started with the math department. They were really ready to kind of really work as a team and they came to me and said, hey, we want to work and revamp how we, you know, sequence, how we support students in AIS. And you can really see in the results post-COVID, all of, I mean, we had some nice math results before, but you could really see it especially in algebra. We've really changed how we support students on their path to algebra, that's a, that's a graduation requirement. Geometry and algebra two are advanced regions components, but ever 100% of our students have to take algebra. And this 95% was more than student. So, you know, it's amazing how far we've come.
The region's proficiency is 85 or better?
That's called, that's mastery. The region's proficiency is 65 or less passing.
Okay.
But we traditionally think of as passing. We recognize, you know, ELA, we have solid proficiency. We're working similar to what we did with math a few years ago, really taking a look at our sequencing, our vertical alignment, how they complement each other. So that ELA exam occurs in 11th grade. How would it, starting in seventh grade, how they build on, on the writing? How do they build on those standards and skills and, and use the data from the year before? And how do they all work together? This is really a team effort. I know Mrs. Courtney, she takes these numbers, she's always digging into it, looking at it, but this is really, that exam is so much different than the other ones. All the other ones are very context specific to. All the other ones are very context specific to like that one year of content that they're learning, whereas ELA is a culmination of that nine, 10th, and 11th grade. So it's really a different type of exam. So Mr. Brady and a lot of, we brought in a curriculum consultant, and some of them that they're doing is looking at how they can complement each other and work together in their curriculum to try to get those. And as you can see, last year, the first year, we brought back earth science. So we do not have an earth science teacher. And even though Mrs. McPhee does not have that full certification, she has, she's very skilled, and it's amazing results, 100%. So, you know, I think we're glad to have that back and have an opportunity for our folks. All right, so very quickly, again, here's our summary by the demographics. You can see similar trends with some opportunities with our students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, although you can see that some of these are higher. But again, remember, these kids are coming in and have come into high school with a different foundation and skill set than our younger students. These students had a very solid foundation in elementary, foundational skills in reading, ELA, math. They had different challenges, they had challenges during COVID, but it looks very different. So you're going to see, you know, that's to be expected, that we're going to have very solid, high results. And I think it's, you know, obviously, they're working on our teachers as well. All right, so next step's very similar, pretty much all the same, ICT, curriculum alignment. We did this year add a, what we call in biology period, it's a little confusing. We probably should have just called it like homeroom and extra help period that was extended. But even just looking at our first five weeks of data, we have, we're seeing a lower percentage of number of failed classes than over the past few years. So we're hoping that this will be an opportunity for all kids to get, you know, if they want to go, it's like basically after school, between periods two and three. So if you go to CTE, if you have a job, if you have to go home and watch your brother and sister after school, you can still get extra help in the middle of the day. So seeing some positive results from that. So, and again, talked about the poverty, worked with Ruby Payne and her people. And so very quickly, our vision and mission, which we developed last year, we want to empower all of our methods of improvement. We want to be effective in lifelong learning, growing and becoming future-ready. So in order to achieve the mission and district, these are our priority areas that we developed with our stakeholder groups. So these are overall our priority areas for the next five years. Not going to leave all this aside for you, but the categories are supportive environment, academic success for all, and community connection. If you would like more information, we also have our blueprint posted on our website. All of this information. So principals, Mrs. Crandall and I developed our goals based on some misinformation. Some of this is work that is ongoing, but we would like to improve student learning through data-driven instruction in our professional learning communities. So really working with our faculty and staff, making sure they have the data, the resources, and the tools they need to really look at what our students need. Through curriculum instruction, instructional technology, continues to support students in our multi-tier systems of support, really looking at students who are struggling in that tier one in that classroom, how do we support them along the way? And really working on, we need to update our professional development plan. So the teachers, you know, I've talked to WADA, our teachers here in the unit, we're going to work with their professional development team collaboratively to develop our new professional development plan for the next few years, and also to develop and update our guidance plan, which supports academic success for all. See, saw those numbers. We want to increase the number of students who are proficient. And we'd like, we hope that we, our goal is 10%, but I think any improvement is in the right direction. So we want to continue to improve our math proficiency, our math in the LA proficiency, as well as our proficiency rates on the region's exam, increase our graduation rate each year, develop systems to reduce chronic absenteeism rate in each building. So York State measures that, we measure that. We are seeing a lot of students that are regularly absent. We really got to get down to the bottom of that, because if you're absent, obviously, you're going to be less successful in school when you're here, because you're missing significant amount of instruction. And obviously, very important goal is to have a safe and respectful learning environment for all of our students.
What's the rough percentage of, of absentee?
So we have not received our data yet on that. I would say it's probably close to 20%. Implementing consistent communication. At the classroom level, the building and district level, we've added our rooms component. We've upgraded our website. We're really trying to increase our communication with students and families, faculty and staff, so that we're all on the same page and we're all heading in the same direction together. Really looking at student voice, active engagement for all, and community connectedness among our faculty, our staff, our students, and along with our family. Those are our goals. And we'll give you updates mid-year. We'll give you an update every 10 to 15 years. But no, that was long, but I think it was important for you to know the direction that we're going. But thank you.
Yeah.
We move on.
Ready, girl?
Yes.
The hand raising part.
The hand raising part. Do we have our consent agenda? Does anybody wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for this?
No.
It's interesting, I'm indicating a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So.
We don't really have any reports. We covered a lot around with our free statements. I do know that, you know, we'll be hearing some things to put together that app before the sports change. We're moving on to personnel. Entertained a motion to approve the civil service title change for Paul Yakubek from head building maintenance worker to director of facilities one. Mr. Yakubek successfully passed a civil service exam in January of 2023 and is reachable for his civil service eligibility.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Questions, no? Although the favorably seeking by raising your hand, motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Jason Burke as the co-advisor of the weightlifting club for the 23-24 school year. This appointment is in the capacity of employees at will. Some of the motion by Heidi. Everybody, Peter, any questions? No? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Erin Underwood as the co-advisor of the weightlifting club for the 22 or 23-24 school year. This appointment, again, is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved. Motion by Heidi.
That was Jen.
That was me.
That was Jen. Second by me. We'll change those initials. Motion by Jen, second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained, excuse me, entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Frank Bronhopper as the varsity wrestling coach for the 23-24 school year. This appointment is in the capacity of employees at will. So.
Second.
By Heidi, second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Zero.
Can I get your sister to be a coach?
I don't know. Do you know, Chris, do you know how long Frank's been coaching?
Forever.
Twenty-five.
Has he got a?
He was part of the varsity team, maybe.
His service pin, I was just wondering, has he had been?
Thirty.
Yeah, he's probably been coaching.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, it's a long time. And we appreciate his, his work. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Chris Bronhopper as the varsity girls' wrestling coach for the 23-24 school year. This employee, this appointment is in the capacity of employees at will.
Is there any special training involved in that?
She heard you talk about coaching appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Do you feel equipped to do the job?
Yeah, there was actually a special training for, I'm sure. Yeah, certified for women's specific, it was formidable.
Any further questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Maryam Nestle as the JV girls' basketball coach for the 23-24 school year. So.
Second.
Heidi, second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Connor West as the varsity boys' basketball coach for the 23-24 school year. Again, the appointment is in the capacity of what?
So moved.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
I'm going to abstain from the next one.
Oh, okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Jim Perry as the varsity girls' basketball coach for the 23-24 school year.
Oh.
Second. Was that a question or a vote?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was giving everybody their opportunities to speak. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried four zero. Peter, let's see. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of Ashley Saunders as a part-time aide effective October 6, 2023. Her fingerprints are on file with the district.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Linda Penna as a part-time teacher aide effective October 12, 2023.
So moved.
By Heidi.
Second.
And by Peter. All those in favor, please sign by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion to approve this, this, excuse me, entertained a motion to approve the status of April Andrews' employment from part-time teacher aide to full-time teacher aide effective October 11, 2023. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Ann DeLard. Oh, I'm sorry. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Keaton Cozy as a substitute teacher effective October 19, 2023, pending fingerprint clearance.
So moved.
Motion by Peter.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. DeAllard, yeah, thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Ann DeAllard as a substitute cafeteria worker effective October 16, 2023, pending fingerprint clearance.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
And by Jen. I'm looking in that direction. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation of Eva Woodell from her cafeteria worker position effective October 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. If there's no objections, I'd like to combine the next four items. They are tax correction item. Entertained a motion to approve the issuance of a corrected tax bill in the amount of $0 to Bearden Volunfire Fire Department, a corrected tax bill in the amount of $3,258.32 to Mark Bascom and Lindsay Fisk, a corrected tax bill in the amount of $428.13 to Natalie Kennedy, and a corrected tax bill in the amount of $3,620.66 issued to Timothy and Dorrit Grant. These were determined to be clerical errors as defined in Real Traffic Tax Law, Section 550, paragraph.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. Any questions or concerns about the? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. If there's no objection, I'd like to combine the next two building use requests. Entertained a motion to approve the building use request from the Salem Cambridge Youth Field Hockey for use of the varsity field space October 14, 2023, from 8:00 to 3:00 for a youth field hockey play day. To approve the building use request from the Salem Cambridge Youth Wrestling for the elementary gym and cafeteria for youth wrestling, this would be one day a week from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, starting on November 27 and continuing until February 29. And to approve the building use request from the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce to use the parking lot by the elementary school on Saturday, November 25 for staging of the Christmas parade. They will need to use the area from 10:00 till 3:00.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. Any questions about the building? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the agreement between Salem Central School and Alyssa Sabatino for curriculum consulting services for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
By Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. So this was, this is the curriculum consultant that we're working with at the high school this year and was very well received on super tennis conference day. We received a lot of very nice feedback, so I think it'll be very worthwhile, yes, good resource. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the budget transferred as presented in the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Again.
Second by Jen. All those, any questions about the campus? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the reserve fund report and analysis for the 23, the 22-23. Who is it?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any questions, concerns about the?
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried, carry on. Entertained a motion to accept the external audit of the extra classroom activity fund and corrective action plan for the 22-23 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Peter. Questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the external audit corrective action plan for the 22-23 school year.
So moved.
Okay.
Second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion that the Board of Education establish an unemployment reserve fund and fund it with $100,000. This will be funded with unappropriated fund balance from June 30, 2023. This fund will be used to pay all current and future approved unemployment claims. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. Any questions or concerns about that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Entertained a motion that the Board of Education transfer $37,124 from the Employee Benefit Reserve Fund to the Employee Retirement System Reserve per our reserve fund analysis policy. The Employee Benefit Reserve Fund is reevaluated to reflect the fiscal year end of June 30's actual calculation. As of June 30, 2023, the fund decreased by $37,124. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter.
I just want to say that this action really does not need to be taken, but since we have the new members and they're not familiar with the policy, I wanted to put it out there. Talking with the auditor, it isn't, you know, that is our policy, so that's what we normally do, and you'll see that in the next reserve fund analysis report next year. But I just thought, just for the sake of transparency and let everybody know, this is why we're doing this action.
And this is because there's certain amount that can be moved and based on.
Right, so there's an actual calculation I have to do at the end of every school year based on how many sick and personal days, and it's that simple of a calculation. You, you look at how long everybody's been here, so the likelihood of them going away or retiring, so a new person would be at like 5%, whereas somebody else at 28 or 29, which we don't have, but off the top would be more likely. So there's a whole calculation done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Now the next two. Giving you a drink of water.
Infectments.
All right. Entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the following secret resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of the Salem Central School District, hereafter known as the Board, is proposing to undertake a project involving the reconstruction and improvement of various school buildings, facilities, and sites, including but not limited to building interior and exterior upgrades, environmental improvements, electric, electric, mechanical, and plumbing system upgrades, lighting improvements, roof replacements, and site improvements, including parking and asphalt upgrades, sidewalk replacements, driveway modifications, ADA accessibility upgrades, place gate surfacing, and athletic facility improvements, renovations, and replacements. And whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, hereunder SIKR, and the regulations thereunder require the Board to undertake a review of the potential environmental impacts, if any, associated with the project before approving the same. And whereas this project is an unlisted action within the meaning of SIKR, and whereas Part 1 of the Short Environmental Assessment Form was transmitted to all involved agencies together with notification of the Board's desire to act as lead agency with respect to the environmental review of the proposed project. And whereas all involved agencies have consented to Board acting as lead agency with respect to the environmental review of the proposed project. And whereas in Title VI New York Code Rules and Regulations, Section 617.7, requires a lead agency to issue a written determination of significance with respect to any proposed unlisted action. And whereas the Board has carefully considered the nature and scope of the proposed project as set forth in the Short Environmental Assessment Form compared with respect to such project and makes the following determinations. One, the proposed project involves the reconstruction and improvement of various school buildings, facilities, and sites, including but not limited to building interior and exterior upgrades, environmental improvements, electric, mechanical, and plumbing system upgrades, lighting improvements, roof replacements, and site improvements, including parking and asphalt upgrades, sidewalk replacements, driveway modifications, ADA accessibility upgrades, place gate surfacing, and athletic facility improvements, renovations, and replacements. Two, the proposed project is classified under procedure as an unlisted action. Three, upon consideration of the proposed project, review of the Short Environmental Assessment Form, the criteria contained in Title VI New York Code Rules and Regulations and Section 617.7(c) and all other supporting information, the Board identifies the following relevant areas of environmental concern as set forth hereafter and analyzes whether the proposed project may have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Four, the proposed project does not involve and therefore will not result in any substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground, or surface water quality or quantity, traffic or noise levels, or a substantial increase in solid waste production, or a substantial increase in potential for erosion, flooding, bleaching, or drainage problems. The proposed improvements will be located in an area of the district's property which has already been improved and used for the same purposes. The proposed project will not physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body. Any increase in water usage, wastewater production, and/or solid waste production as compared to existing levels will be minimal and non-significant and can be adequately managed by the existing municipal services. Five, the proposed project is not involved and therefore will not result in the removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation or fauna, a substantial interference with the movement of any resident or migratory fish or wildlife species, impacts on any significant habitat area, substantial adverse impacts on a threatened or endangered species of animal or plant or the habitat thereof, or other significant adverse impacts to nature's resources. Number six, the proposed project is not located within a designated critical environment area. Number seven, the proposed project will not create a material conflict with the community's current plans or goals as officially approved or adopted. Eight, the proposed project will not result in the impairment of the character or quality of any important historical, archaeological, or aesthetic resources or existing community or neighborhood character. Prior to the commencement of any work, the proposed project will be submitted for review by the State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, and the proposed project will be modified to incorporate whatever recommendations, if any, are offered to mitigate impacts to any historical and/or archaeological resources. Nine, the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse impacts to the aesthetic resources or to existing community or neighborhood characters. The project area has long been developed and used as a public school campus, and the proposed project is consistent with that continued use. Ten, the proposed project will not result in any major adverse change in the use of either the quantity or type of energy. Eleven, the proposed project will not result in the creation of a hazard to human health. Twelve, the proposed project does not involve and therefore will not result in a substantial change in the use or intensity of use of land, including agriculture, open space, or recreational resources, or in its capacity to support such uses. Thirteen, the proposed project will not result in the encouragement or attraction of a large number of people to the site as compared to the number of people that would come absent the proposed project. Fourteen, the proposed project will not result in a material demand for other actions, will not result in changes to two or more elements of the environment which together, which would result in a substantial adverse impact, and will not cumulatively result in a substantial adverse impact when considered with any related actions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board finds and concludes that the proposed project is an unlisted action within the meaning of Title VI New York Code Rules and Regulations, Section 617.2, and it is further resolved that the Board hereby declares itself lead agency with respect to the environmental review of the proposed project, and it is further resolved that upon consideration of the foregoing, the Board finds and concludes that the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse impact to the environment, and it is further resolved that the Board hereby issues a negative declaration with respect to the proposed project.
Good job.
David, you had no idea how exciting and thrilling this job.
All right, so. Entertain a motion to accept that resolution.
So moved.
Second. Jen, any questions or concerns about the resolution?
This is standard. You have to spend a day on it.
We'll fire you if you say anything. It's just standard template stuff.
Well, it is something that they do have to take a look at, and of course, where the thing that's in there is that, you know, it will be, it will go through the Historic Preservation Commission of the state, and, you know, we will take into consideration everything, the impact that this project will make. I mean, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Yes, my. Entertain a motion to adopt the following resolution. Now that we have the secret resolution, we can now actually do this right. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Salem Central School District that a special meeting of the qualified voters of the school district be, and the same is hereby called to be held in Room 418 of the Salem High School, East Broadway Salem, New York, on Tuesday, December 5, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. prevailing time for the purpose of voting on the following proposition. Proposition, shall the Board of Education of the Salem Central School District be authorized to, one, renovate, reconstruct, and improve various school buildings, facilities, sites, acquire original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purpose for which such buildings, facilities, and sites are to be used and pay costs incidental there too at a maximum aggregate cost of $14,710,059. Two, expend such sum for such purpose, including the expenditure of $1,500,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund and the appropriation of unappropriated fund balance as determined by the Board of Education from time to time. Three, levy the necessary tax therefore to be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts as may be determined by the Board of Education, taking into account state aid and the amount to be expended from unappropriated fund balance and the Capital Reserve Fund. And four, in anticipation of the collection of such tax, issue bonds and notes of the school district at one time or from time to time in the principal amount not to exceed $13,210,059, and the levy of a tax to pay the interest on said obligations when due. Be it further resolved, the vote upon such proposition shall be by paper ballot or absentee ballot. The hours during which the poll shall be kept open shall be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, or for as long thereafter as necessary to enable qualified voters who are in the polling place at 8:00 p.m. to cast their ballots. Be it further resolved that the absentee ballots may be applied for at the office of the district clerk from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, except holidays. Applications for absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk at least seven days prior to the vote if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, or prior to December 4, 2023, if the ballot is to be delivered personally to the voter. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on December 5, 2023. Be it further resolved that the education law makes special provisions for absentee voting by permanently disabled voters of the district, and any questions regarding these rights should be directed to the clerk of the board. Be it further resolved that the education law also makes special provisions for absentee voting for military voters of the school district. Specifically, the law provides a unique procedure for military ballots and school district votes. Whereas absentee ballot applications and absentee ballots must be received by the voter by mail, a military voter may electively receive their absentee ballot application and, uh, by absentee ballot by mail, email, or facsimile. The military voter must, however, return their original military ballot application and military ballot by mail or in person. The clerk of the board shall transmit the military voter's military ballot in accordance with the military voter's preferred method of transmission no later than 25 days before the vote. The clerk of the board must then receive the military voter's military ballot by mail or in person no later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of the vote. Be it further resolved that a list of all persons to whom absentee ballots shall have been issued will be available for inspection prior to and on the day of the vote, except for Saturdays and Sundays in the office of the district clerk during regular hours between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Be it further resolved that any qualified voter may, upon examination of such list, file a written challenge of the qualifications of the voter or of any person whose name appears on such list, stating the reasons for such challenge. Such written challenge shall be transmitted to the district clerk to the inspectors of the election on the day of the vote. Be it further resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish a notice of such meeting in two newspapers of general circulation within the school district, four times within the seven weeks next preceding such school district meeting. The first publication to be at least 45 days prior to the date of the meeting. Be it further resolved, this resolution takes effect immediately upon its adoption. Motion to.
Second.
Second by Peter. Now, I do, we are asking for As and Ns, so may I show you, Heidi, how you vote? Yay. Jen?
Yay.
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 I am also here, so motion carries five zero.
Always fun.
One more action item, it's shorter. Entertain a motion to accept a bus, please bid from the Lang and financial services Incorporated for two 65-passenger Bloomberg Vision gas engine buses at $31,820 annually for each bus for up to five years.
Is this a way of stuffing our buses full of gas, our bus garage full of gas?
No, we, we have to have a motion.
So moved.
Would you like to second?
Is this a, sure.
All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Oops, I'm sorry. Discussion. We have a motion on the table, you have a question.
So does this, to enter these leases, these five-year leases, just how does that places with you? Does it benefit us in any way? Because we're no longer, or we're pushing out the expected renewal date of these leases?
So we have a replacement schedule.
So we've been doing this for several years, long before they were talking of the EV buses, and this is, was approved by the voters on our budget vote, that's a separate proposition to do this lease, so this isn't in any way to stuff the bus garage with.
Gas.
Right, we have a replacement schedule that.
To follow.
That, well, we don't have to follow it, but we, it's a good practice.
DOT inspections, so Joe and Carter Joe Scott, there's a rotation schedule that we have for all of our buses.
Because we don't want to be in the situation of having to replace six buses at the same time, so we wrote, so we replace. There's a replacement schedule, we could share that with you if you'd like. Bottom line is, we do a few every year.
Potentially replace more than two or.
No.
More aggressively than.
We generally wouldn't, because that would mean we would might, um, might let's say idle a bus that has useful life on it, so we.
Well, it's just not physically.
Right.
There's no reason to do that.
Good bus.
If we're looking forward, you know, we will have to replace buses, but we will be looking at going from gas to the.
Strictly adheres to the schedule.
But you can still lease those buses.
Right.
It's still an option.
Right, and we, so we are in the process of, as I had mentioned before, um, our fleet study is, is in progress, and your conclusion, I believe, that they are putting it together for us, and so that fleet study will be shared with Joe Wilbur, myself, and Karen, and then we will share that information with you as well.
Also, you ask if we're just doing this to renew it again, once we finish this lease, it's our bus. We don't renew.
You don't, you keep the buses.
Yes.
Any further questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. We had two opportunities for the, the board to be heard. Does anybody have anything that they wish, wish to bring up to the board?
So I'll just add before the board speaks this about just new referendum discussion, I just wanted to add our next.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Our next.
Line's written everywhere. Just very briefly, I'm not sure we had much discussion unless there were questions, but our next steps are, bless you, we're having a, we're in the process of developing the newsletter for the Capitol Project, so it is already being developed, and just now with this final information of referendum, we'll be looking at some drafts of that either at the end of this week, early next week, and then with the hopes of sending it to the printers and getting it mailed out. And then also that will include our presentation schedule in the community, in the different spots in the community, where we'll be, where I will be and Karen, when she's able to come.
But we.
She knows, she's acting surprised.
But we already scheduled the first publication of the resolution? Because this is. The first publication.
Yes, we have. We expect it to be in the paper tomorrow.
It's important to start early.
So will you need any board members to go to any of?
We may, we may, if you would like to come to, so the first one will be on November second, it'll be here in the district, and that'll be our same presentation, also beginning at the Rotary, and, at the courthouse at their, their meeting. And then, so certainly, if board members can come to that, I think it's always good to get a presentations and/or be available, you know, maybe for feedback along the way, and we will be presenting in Shushan Hebrun, so if you belong in one of those communities, I think it would be, if you're available, welcome to, to have you at whatever you would like to come to. I think, I think, I know the community appreciates that, you know, seeing, seeing us go out, and it's been very welcome. Gina has been working on scheduling those for me, and everybody has been really appreciative of reaching out to them and offering that.
Right.
Hopefully goes well.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't mean to. No, that's fine. Too many, I didn't want to miss the addendums. I, I don't know if anybody else had anything to bring up, but I did want to tell people, you know, we had talked at our training that we were looking at maybe having some time to work on board goals and gather again for a workshop format, ones that, because we would be talking about, in fact, our work here would be open to the public. Are people still interested in, in that? And I will reach out to the naysayers if we can, if we can get that scheduled. And so I'll be, I'll be calling you for, on dates, you know, to give them a range of dates. Usually, it probably, it was, we had to push it out a little bit come the summer. They just say that, you know, we'll need some leave time to get those done. Did anybody else?
Another four hour.
Another four hour. Are people available on the weekend? Is that an option, or would you, would you?
It is, it just depends on.
Oh, all right. I didn't know if you just wanted to stay away from the weekend. You have five days a week, you might want to have.
If it works for people, I can, all right.
So I'll leave that as.
Have to check the bill schedule.
We have quite a few.
Yes. Yes, we do, we have. This is. It's gonna be getting into the busy time of the year, so yes, we'll have some fundraising, we have concerts coming up on October twentieth, which is.
Friday night.
Friday night. Twenty-sixth, that's a parent's conference, we've started those, the one this week.
They're reselling, that's exciting.
Yes, and October twenty-seventh, so this is our second year, WACIA has, has, is leading the Kids Wear Pink Day for breast cancer awareness, we have our flamingos on the front line.
We just keep those up.
Yes, well, if you, if you pay, you can leave yourself all year, that could be the see if you can get that bird with your checkbook, and then we can arrange that.
Much quicker flamingo.
See what we can do. Yeah, so we have a few, a lot, a lot of music happenings, we have our, our, early release day, that is a standard, you know, across the board, all New York State schools have to practice an early release.
It's not very early, it's like.
Yes, and, you know, we're, we're easing it, we're starting as a safety committee, making plans about. Right, so we, you end up not releasing students too early, but within the school, over time, you know, we practice different scenarios of maybe having an evacuation drill, and then students go to the buses from the evacuation drill. In future years, we could do an off-site, you know, evacuation and have the buses come and pick kids up and take them home.
Yeah.
So, we would tell students to travel on that day, in case they have to walk a couple blocks or something. But we're gonna start out, we're starting out simply and working on that. So then you see some schedule coming up of some of our presentations. And just a fun fact, Mr. Thomas and I will be attending the New York State School Board Association Convention at the end of next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So we will, yes, at the end of next week, and we will, hopefully bring back some good information.
Same travels.
Where is it?
Hopefully it comes back to this Easter.
Bill's homey, Bill's nice, I have tickets now.
I know.
Well, at this point, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comment, if there's anybody who would like to.
Somebody's gonna be eager to talk to us. Thank you all for coming.
It's nice to see people in the audience listening to me. We've got bedtime stories. That, and one last thing for us to do is entertain a motion to move into executive session or discussion of the employment of a particular person or persons, and like, discuss collective negotiations with our bargaining unit, Washington. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero.
And bringing the kisses and.
So you are free to go, sir.